President Lewis, we are live on YouTube.
Thank you, Cameron. Good evening, all. This is a special meeting in the Board of Education. May I have the interpretation instructions, please?
Absolutely. Buenas tardes. Los participantes pueden escuchar la interpretación al español en vivo de las reuniones del Comité de Educación a través de conferencia telefónica. Por favor, llamen al 303-867-0199. Cuando lo indique, ingrese el código 366589 una vez más. El código es 366589 seguido por la tecla de número. Cuando lo indique, diga su nombre seguido por la tecla de número. Asegúrese de bajar el volumen en su computadora o dispositivo donde esté observando la reunión. Las opciones de subtítulos o closed caption, YouTube ofrece subtítulos en una variedad de idiomas para los videos cuando los vean posteriormente, no en vivo. Para ver un video en YouTube con subtítulos en su idioma de preferencia, haga clic en CC, la esquina inferior derecha de su pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en el icono de configuraciones o settings en la parte inferior derecha de su pantalla de YouTube. Haga clic en Auto Translate o English y seleccione el idioma de su preferencia. Todas las agendas y minutas del comité se encuentran en la página web del Comité de Educación dentro de la página principal de ADAMS 14. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education for January 18, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Monica, roll call, please.
Mr. Amador.
Here.
Mrs. Sala.
Here.
Ms. Lovato.
Here.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Lewis.
Here.
And Ms. Zubia, which I believe has not joined quite yet.
Thank you, Monica. Sorry. So, thank you all for taking time out of your schedules to be with us. This meeting is an opportunity to brainstorm on how best we can support schools, given all that is going on in our district. Our focus this evening will be on COVID protocols and thresholds for determining in-person or remote learning and/or remote learning. We are all aware there are a lot of issues going on that have been taking the focus away from our classrooms and students, but this evening we aren't going to engage in conversation regarding those issues. Tonight, we want to hear your ideas on how best to support our students within and ensure we do everything we can to safely continue with in-person learning. We realize that our community is anxious to hear any decision that would be made this evening regarding how the district will determine whether schools will be held remotely or in-person tomorrow and going forward. We want to make sure we hear directly from our teachers and principals, and we want to make sure that we are making data-driven decisions that are student-centered. So for that reason, any decision we make will be later than 5:00, but prior to our adjournment of the meeting at 7:00 p.m. So that we can hear from everyone in the meeting and stay within our time, I ask that you either raise your hand, turn on your screen, or raise the hand tool in Zoom, and Monica will help us determine who is next to talk. Once you've shared something, let's give others an opportunity, and then we can come back around. If my fellow board colleagues have clarifying questions after someone has spoken, let us know in the same manner. However, it may be best just to listen and then have a clarifying discussion on what we heard. Are there any questions before we begin our conversation? Okay. Who would like to begin our conversation this evening?
Go ahead and unmute, Jason.
Hi.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening. I maybe just want to start off by sort of a general statement about where teachers, I think, are at in general, again. I think what we're looking for is, you know, differentiated benchmarks for buildings because our buildings look so different that specifically speak to when we are going to need to go remote because we don't have sufficient staffing. I think everybody knows that we're in the middle of the probably the greatest labor shortage crisis of any of our times, and these are decisions that are hard but need to be made because if we don't have a firm line in the sand, we end up in situations that I don't think anybody wants, you know, overcrowded classrooms and less-than-ideal educational settings. So having some clear rules of the road, I think, would help us to stop doing this complete shutdown or complete open-up and be able to more target where the needs are and still allow the most, you know, children to enter a positive educational environment safely. So I want to also thank everybody that's here and working towards that goal. So that's a general statement about, I think, where the teachers are at.
Thank you, Jason. Don't all be so quiet. Any of my board members, would you like to say anything? I know you've had a couple of meetings in the past few days.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, President Lewis. I think, I first want to say, I know it's hard coming into this meeting and not knowing what our expectations are. We really just want to hear your ideas. I hear from parents, I hear from students, I hear from teachers, but we haven't heard from building leadership just to hear, you know, what is working, what is not working. If you have ideas on the thresholds, which we got a lot of data, which is super helpful, but what can we do to make this process work moving forward? Because I don't think we can continue sending notice to our parents at 9:00 the night before. I just think, to me as a board member, when I don't feel well-informed, I feel like our parents and our teachers and our students are absolutely feeling that. So we're just kind of leaning in here, asking for your ideas to make this better.
Thank you, Vice President Lovato.
Mr. Garcia. Go ahead and unmute, and then Lynn, you'll go after voice.
Good evening, board. Can you guys hear me okay? Team, man, it's 14. When I started this at those, good evening. Jason, I appreciate the words there. Appreciate this work with you, Jason. Maybe we get a chance to work again together. Couple, I guess a couple of things. I had a teacher meeting today at 3:30, from 3:30 to 4:00. And I just want to share with the board and our team about what I learned from my teachers. First of all, I think all schools should be commended, board members and Dr. Luria, for the way teachers have risen up to the occasion to be able to flip to remote learning in a matter of hours. Last weekend was amazing to see. So there really is some success stories in this, what we're doing, and that's one of them right there. The way that all schools responded, giving up weekend time, family time to do that, was incredible, and I know that we were all very proud of that. Also, our students continued to definitely rise to the occasion last week. A lot of success, a lot of success stories last week. Now, going into what I learned today is this. It's hard. It's affecting our kids and our staff when things are kind of like up in the air right now. There's that feeling in the community, at least at the Rose Hill community, that things are up in the air. And therefore, our kids are starting to struggle more today than they did last week because of the uncertainty. It's starting to trickle down now into our staff, myself, my teachers, the community, the kids. So that's what I learned today. I didn't hear that until prior on 3:40 this afternoon, that the uncertainty is affecting our kids. They don't seem to be so engaged as they were last week. I think because, again, the uncertainty, the late call last night, all those kind of things. So I think moving forward is if we could come up with a plan that we could have consistency. I think our kids, our teachers, our families would appreciate having consistent plan so we can really get after the learning that our kids desperately need, is to be able to learn. So I think that's, I don't want to take all the time. I know my team, my teammates, my colleagues, the great leaders that we have here also want to have time to voice what their thinking, but that's my initial thoughts right now as I'm learning as of today, that the uncertainty is not helping our kids, not helping our teachers. So we need to determine what we're going to do and communicate that plan out and have consistency and not this back-and-forth. My teachers have also asked for, you know, some more time than just Friday night, you know, switch over for one day or a few hours' notice. I think that's also would be something that would be helpful, too. I really appreciate your time.
Mr. Camas, if we could go ahead and unmute and turn on your camera, Lynn. Be followed by Chris Garcia and then Robert Savage. Cheers.
Did I get it, Monica?
Go ahead, Lynn, yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to echo Jason and Mr. Camas. The biggest concern I heard was the late notice. And even from my parents, when I picked up some of our students today, they didn't know whether they were supposed to, you know, come in or just one child was coming in. We had to tell them their other child wasn't coming in because we were remote. And for us, I know we are pretty much behind the scene. We're not out there like our teachers, but we all play a very important role in, you know, our kids' lives. And so I guess some of our questions were around, like, consistency because, you know, if we go out as bus drivers to pick up our students and then some of them aren't going, then we have to turn them back, but we don't know if anybody's at home for those students. But if we bring them in, we don't know if there's going to be anybody there for them there either, you know? And then for our nutrition services, if we should become shorthanded there or, you know, we can't feed our children because we haven't had enough notice to get the food prepped. Or our health clerks, you know, in the schools, or our building engineers with cleaning everything. And it makes it really difficult. So we're just kind of looking for consistency and to take all of our duties and accountability, too, when determining however we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Chris Garcia, go ahead and unmute and turn on your camera.
All right. Thank you, Madam President, board members and everyone, colleagues out there. Take a lot of strength from how well you rally as needed. And I know the board wants to be responsive to the community. Number one, safety of everyone, students, staff. The safety obviously is our number-one goal. Number two, lead time, definitely, we need to do, we need to have a better plan for the decision-making, number one, and then the number two, when it happens. Because I think without that consistency or the late notice, what I'm finding is parents aren't sure if they're supposed to go or not go, so then they yield to their kids, and then sometimes the kids go, "Yeah, Mom, we're not supposed to go in today." And, "No, Mom, I'm not supposed to log in." So anytime we're inconsistent like that, it helps breed that, and then it frustrates parents, and then we lose some of our attendance. Our attendance, like Principal Kamala said too early about attendance was a little bit better last week than it was today. That helps me. The other thing that I struggled with was when absences were put in and the determination was to be remote, let's say for my building. An issue was created when those same absences that were put in previous to the decision were then allowed to take those absences out after the decision. One, because then it's, I feel it's a little, there's an integrity issue and maybe a little bit disingenuous about putting a day in and then taking it back out, and then there is no consequence. And then our quality of our, you know, then the quality of education drops significantly, and I'd like us to think about if we do make a determination based on whatever that threshold is, that once that threshold has been established, then we have kind of, we have a plan of if I've called out and then our school is now beyond the threshold, what is the decision-making that needs to happen if then I could teach from home or not teach from home? Like, we just need the clarity in that, because then we know what we need to do on our end as far as are we posting asynchronous work or are we allowing the teacher to teach from home? And then, you know, how are those absences cleaned up so that we're fair and we don't put a teacher in a bad spot? But then also, kids then lack that clarity. So I think, to me, that was the learning that I had from yesterday, that there was some, we just need to think through those things and kind of have a plan moving forward. And I would definitely recommend, you know, multiple-day kind of a decision versus a back-in and then out the next. Obviously, that's something that's a real struggle. So I commend the bus drivers for getting our kids to school, and you guys have a lot of pressure on this one, but those are some big ones that I would say, please consider.
Thank you so much, Chris Garcia. Robert, will you go ahead and unmute and turn on your camera?
Thank you, President Lewis, Dr. Luria, members of the board. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to share our opinions with you. It's really nice to have that opportunity. I think the pros for online learning so far is, like Louis said, is a really quick transition. It was like riding a bike for the teachers. They were able to get to and be right in form like they were last year. I saw lots of engagement strategies, Kahoots, GoGuardian, NearPods, things like that. Our attendance was also very good online compared to last year and even better than our in-person learning this year, so that was a pro. The cons is it's not as effective as in-person learning, and we know that from the data. You know, when I look at the classroom of kids listening to the teacher, half of them are, you know, having a hard time paying attention, just like I do in extended online meetings. I use the metaphor of pushing a truck through the mud. The teachers are pushing twice as hard and it's going half as far. Needs, I think, is anything we can do to get as many in-person minutes as possible at the elementary level. If we have the ability to have a grade level stay home or individual classroom stay home, I think we could be open even to beyond that 25% threshold. And also notice, and I know that's going to be said a lot, but we have a lot of kids that are sometimes left at home without childcare or without sufficient childcare when the notice is late, so it's a safety concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason, would you like to unmute and turn on your camera, please?
Yeah, two ideas that I wanted to throw into the conversation, which have been talked in other meetings, but I want to make sure that they're mentioned here, is some sort of agreed cutoff time for when this is going to be, you know, determined, right? You know, is it 3:00 in the morning, is it 5:00 in the morning, is it 10:00 at night, whatever it is, right? And then also, you know, key positions, right, within a building. So, you know, maybe there's an overall percentage, maybe there's a percentage within a certain grade level that, you know, causes like a grade level to be impacted. But also, like, you know, is our medical staff there? If not, if we don't have a school nurse or a sub that can come in, right, is that a good situation? You know, if we don't have a principal in the building that day or a sub, you know, that sort of thing. So like, what are the key staffing positions?
Mr. Clark, if you can go ahead and turn on your microphone and your camera. Mr. Garcia, you will go after Mr. Clark.
President Lewis, assistant members of the board, Dr. Luria, thanks for the opportunity to share. I just want to reinforce some of the things that have been said. Definitely, as Chris shared, safety is very important and the most important thing. And also echoing as Bob shared, that we know our kids learn best in person in that as a building leader, we would like the flexibility, as much flexibility as possible, down to the individual classroom or grade level, certainly, school by school potentially, to have that flexibility to keep as much of our school open today as possible. Today, for example, I could have had half of the school in-person and the other half asynchronous or remote if I had had that flexibility. And communication, I think, is really important here. I heard Jason mention a few things around flexibility in crowded classrooms, and I think that, you know, we do a nice job across the board to meet those. We try our best to reduce the crowded classroom sizes, and we are also wanting that same degree of flexibility. So I think communication across all parties is going to help decisions being made. And again, echoing the need for clear communication, decision-making, and not reversing decisions as we had to do yesterday in the eyes of our community, and I think we, you know, we could do better. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. The last thing about flexibility, we talked about the grade levels and different things. The other one for me specifically is our, like, our special ed students, my SSN students and my two teachers, their ability to be flexible where they could remain open and provide services for those kids where maybe the rest of my school couldn't. Let's say, for example, that would be something also. So special programming flexibility would be another thing to consider.
Principal Menard, can you go ahead and turn on your camera and unmute? And Principal Pearson, you will go after that.
Good evening, President Board Lewis and distinguished members of the board and colleagues. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to bring our concerns or suggestions to your table, if you will. I know that I do agree with a lot of the things that my colleagues have said. I also want to put the notion out that our teachers are extremely stressed and overwhelmed right now. And we have to keep in mind that it's not just the pandemic, and it's not just the last two years, but our district is going through some very rough times. And not only are they stressed about whether we're going to be online or whether we'll be in-person, they're stressed about the future. And so the more that we can offer them time to process, prepare, and plan for these switches, I think gives them that notion that we are behind them and they're to support them. And I think that is one of my biggest points, is that we really have to remember that these teachers have so much more going on than just their classroom lives.
Good evening, President Lewis, members of the board, Dr. Luria. I also echo many of the things that I've heard from my colleagues tonight. But I also want to throw in another piece because, you know, one of the things that I think is really important to recognize is that elementary and secondary are not the same. And so when we start thinking about, you know, for example, quarantining a grade level or something like that, it just plays out very different at the secondary level because, you know, each individual student has an array of teachers over the course of the day. The other thing that I think is important to recognize is that coverage, and we worked really hard to come up with these thresholds, but they still are really the low bar as far as I'm concerned. Because I know when I've got that many classes being covered, the quality of learning and the quality of teaching is not consistent with where it needs to be. And in those particular situations, I would make the argument that we are in better situation to be remote for all of the reasons that my colleagues have spoken about today. But also, I think more importantly, is the idea that our teachers are capable of doing that, having had that experience. So I do appreciate the opportunity to have the conversation, but I also think it's really important to think about flexibility. And I think that when we start talking thresholds, there are just some gray areas. And I would like the opportunity, if we find ourselves in a situation where we have to make a decision, that we can at least discuss those gray areas as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mombert, go ahead and turn on your camera and unmute yourself.
Hi. Okay, a couple more things. Wanted to sort of like echo and maybe add a little bit to Dawn's point about, you know, the impact of the workload in the current environment, you know? We really, really want to think very, very hard about, you know, what is de facto the workload of our teachers, all of our employees, for that matter. And that's why I just want us to be sober about our capacity in these decisions. Because over time, what is happening, not what's going to happen, but what is happening is that people are completely burned out and it becomes a negative feedback loop, you know? Positions are becoming harder and harder and harder to fill with fewer and fewer applicants. And so we really want to think about the long-term, shoot, the short-term impact. I mean, how many people have we lost since August in the district? It's significant. And so anyway, I just want to echo that, you know, and I think that clear guidelines, like are being discussed here, would be something that would go a long way in many different ways of helping the situation. Another thing I want to point out is that many of our neighbors, not all, but many, most at this point, have district policies or superintendent policies or language and contracts that discuss administrative, central administration, whatever, covering of classes, because the substitute issue is such a crisis at this point. I think one of our adjacent I think one of our adjacent school districts have their ESS folks going in, I think. X number of hours a week. And another one, I think 12 has X number of hours covering. Semester, I believe. It's different because this is also new that the different districts are sort of like popping up with different directives. Because everybody's having a difficult time. Finding subs. It's a particular issue here in Adams 14. And then the last thing I want to do is I want to echo Martin's, Martin's point. And, and sort of spur some thinking about like the future of education, given the. The, the, the problems, right, that we. The funding. The lack of. Young, young people entering the profession. And that is, you know. We're, we've had a lot of practice now at online learning and it's getting better. If you look at the attendance, especially at the second, at the secondary level. For that Thursday, that, that Friday that we were back, you know, versus. That last Friday that we were back. And versus, you know, the Monday that we were online, like, at least in my situation, my attendance improved, you know. And my engagement was good, you know, I think to Luis's point about, you know, the disengagement today. You know, please, I'm gonna, I'm gonna project onto this that please don't read that as like. A difficulty with online learning. I think that's, and I think Louis said this, but it's about the inconsistency is the piece. And so. You know. What, you know, you got away the quality of online learning. Not versus the ideal of like, you know, a well-staffed, perfect in-person learning environment. That's not, that's not the two. It's online learning versus a thinly staffed. Situation in a school, you know, and. That, that's what, what we want to avoid, I think. I think, you know, for me at least. You know, in my class, there was a whole lot more learning going on this Monday online than there was the Friday before that in person. Just because, first off, my kids were absent. Yeah, so anyway, I've talked a lot. I'm sure I'll have more in a minute.
Principal must feel free to mute and turn on your camera.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, well, let me turn on my camera. Big camera shut me down. I'll just, I'll just talk, Cameron. What'd you do, Cameron? All right, thanks, Cameron. I guess, Jason, absolutely, Jason, inconsistency, I wrote it down for my teachers and. Something else I want to share of board members and Dr. Loria and team. And that is, I think our team has done a great job of advocating for our teachers. Who definitely have been amazing advocating for our students. But I think it's important that we also advocate, and I want to bring this forward for our community. Our community, we need to see this from their perspective as well. I've had several parent meetings over the last several weeks. And every, at least for the Rose Hill community. Is asking, when can we be in person and stay in person when it's safe? So I think I want, again, speaking for the community perspective, having last minute decision making, having inconsistency. Not only is it stressing out our teachers, our kids, but also our communities, our parents. Who, as to this day, this afternoon, I had, I had meetings actually with parents today. And. They know, as Principal Bob said. They learn best, we learn best in person. So I just want to make sure that the board is in tune that this is. I think this is an opportunity to bring all of the, all of us together, because we want what's best for our kids, including the community. I think it's very important that we also remember that they have needs as well. That they need to feel valued, just like teachers do and kids. And it starts with having consistent plan. Seeing it through, having timely communication. And really, you know, for them to see us as being a cohesive team that's here to serve. The Adams 14 community, and I think that's something that. Is lacking right now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Concerns, questions? Principal Colick, if you can go ahead and unmute and turn on your camera. You'll be followed by Mr. Momburg and then. Principal Clark.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Loria and distinguished members of the board. I just want to echo again what others have stated, and this goes for. Our entire Adams 14 community, but that communication goes a long way towards helping everybody prepare appropriately. And that includes families, right, being able to make sure that they have proper. Care for their, for their children. Teachers to be able to prepare lessons properly for whether it's in person or remote. And then students also for that peace of mind for kind of knowing what's happening. I also understand that there is a lot of gray area here. I heard Jason Mollberg mention like certain times to be able to like make sure that we have communication by. And but the reality is, is that that communication is really based on the data that is in the system at that time. And, and we do know that that fluctuates and that is a fluid situation. And so. I, I really think as much time as we can provide our entire community, it would go a long way to supporting everybody being successful. But I also understand that. It's a challenge as well. Thank you.
I apologize, Principal Selig, for mispronouncing your name. I had a moment there. Mr. Momburg, if you want to go ahead and turn on your microphone and camera.
Okay, my, my, my car calls him Chiolik every time I give him a call, so it's not, he's used to it. Okay, the one thing, another point I want to make was. The decision makers are on this call. I believe that, that our board has the authority to make this decision. That, that, and the other piece, as I've been in a bunch of meetings like this over the last, not just the last days, but weeks, years, honestly. There's been a lot of paralysis in Adams 14 over the last. Four year, I mean. Probably four years. A lot of paralysis. I think it's a symptom of structures that were forced on us. But it is the situation we find ourselves in. So I just want to, you know. Say whatever I can to empower the folks on this call to. To do, and have been doing. That's the other thing. I want to do a shout out particularly to the Board of Education for owning their power. Super proud to have you as our board. And, but, but for all of us, you know, I, I find myself in a situation, situations almost daily where like, okay, something needs to happen here. Well, I guess I should probably do something, you know. So now, now is the time. Is what I'm saying. All right, thank you.
Jason, thanks for shouting out the board. I also want to give you a shout out. Both your position and the board's position is very challenging. It's not always clear what the right way forward is. Whatsoever. I do want to avoid the situation though that we had yesterday at DuPont. I just want to share it with the board, just so everybody's aware. We were fine on staffing until about 4:00 PM yesterday. At which point, the union suggested that our teachers put absences in ASOP. And that's what pushed us over. Into being remote and asynchronous today. And I just wanted the board to be aware of that. As they consider, and thank you for allowing me to speak frankly.
Thank you, Principal Clark. Ms. Principal Pearson, will you unmute and turn on your camera, please?
So I actually lowered my hand, Monica, because. I had something I thought was really important to say, and then I realized maybe it wasn't. But I, you know, I just want to say one thing, and I think it's just, you know, kind of a reflection based on. What I'm experiencing and what we're experiencing at Adam City Middle School. The year, you know, in terms of coverage. Was awful and has been awful. It's been a very tough year for our teachers. And I think that we're in this place right now. I think we've kind of arrived at a critical mass where you throw in the Omicron variant. You already have a labor shortage and we find ourselves in a situation where my teachers can count on covering classes. Probably about 85% of the time. Which then undermines other things that we're trying to accomplish throughout the day. My, my concern is regardless of what is decided tonight, I think we've got a bigger issue. And I think we have to start taking into consideration that our teachers are getting tired. And rightfully so, I get it. It is very tough to do coverage in addition to all the other things that we asked our teachers to do. As that begins to churn, what happens is our teachers eventually get to a place where they get tired and then they are taking more time off. And it just becomes this cycle that does not end. And so I think we really have to focus on a really solid. Kind of robust remote learning plan that we can switch into. And it doesn't feel as much like a departure from the norm. Because right now, the norm that we're living with is that people feel stressed, overwhelmed cases are. You know, definitely off the charts. And I just think we have to work harder to be pragmatic, given our current situation. Thank you.
Principal Stokely, please go ahead and turn on your microphone and. Your camera.
Thanks, Monica. Excuse me. Good evening, President Lewis, members of the board, Dr. Loria. I just want to jump in with the preschool perspective. As many of my colleagues have mentioned, our staff and families have risen to the challenges that have come up. Throughout the year. But there is a unique challenge for preschoolers in the fact that. We saw our online and asynchronous. Work for preschool still requires. Somebody to be with them to complete that work. And so. What we found in some cases is that. Some preschoolers may not be able to attend an online session because they're with the babysitter, maybe it's their grandparents. Or even an older sibling who is attending their own online session. Rather than being able to attend their online session. So their, their asynchronous work. Might happen in the evening, once parents get home from work. So that's another thing that I just wanted to throw in there. Stars and Sandville staff is very thankful to return to in-person today. So. But thank you for your work and your time and. All that we're discussing tonight.
So I'd like to invite my colleagues, if they'd like to. Speak and. Talk about what they've heard or if they have any ideas or thoughts, that would be great.
Can I start? Thank you. So first of all, I wanted to acknowledge how. Yes, this was a very difficult situation, and I think that.
Director Zubiya talking.
Is it not, are you not?
You were fine. I could hear you. Was no one else able to hear?
Can you hear us, Janet?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Director Zubiya. I do apologize this. Once in a while happens. So I just wanted to acknowledge how difficult that decision is. Or was less yesterday, and just want to put out there that once again, like everybody has said, it's really about the safety. And you really can't run a building without staff, and so that made it very challenging. But I guess my question is, I wanted to hear from teachers and parents and students. Because I think it's very important that, that they weigh in, because, you know, this on and off, on and off is not good for anybody. And so I just wanted to hear what suggestions were coming in from the families and the kids. Obviously, I know. The parents, as a parent, I would want it to be open all the time. But the reality is, is that this is a health, it's a virus. It's an invisible illness out there that's creating this havoc for everybody. And like I said, I understand that staff have families as well that need to be taken care of, and they themselves are, can also. You know, get the virus. They're not immune to the virus. Nobody is. So I just would like to hear more of. Suggestions on how. To move forward. And, you know, I heard from some parents that they're like, just make up your mind. Is it online or is it in person? And if it's in person, what do we do when we don't have staff? If it's online, what do we do then? When I get that the majority of the folks want their kids in school because they need it. I mean, they. Regardless of how many times I say our, our staff are not babysitters, the reality is that as a working parent, we rely on our kids to be in school so that we can work. And this is a very hardworking community that have parents with two, three jobs. So it's not. I don't think the question is so much that we don't get that in-person is the best. I think it's really coming up with a plan that works for most, because we're not going to come up with one that works for everybody, but one that works for most. That in the end has the same outcome that we want. I think the outcome is that our kids are receiving equitable education to be able to. Have that opportunity to succeed. So. I think we just, you know, keeping that in mind, I think I would be open to what suggestions people have to actually. Make this work. And, and it's something that we've been pondering for like two years now, and I kept saying, we need to talk to the people who are actually doing. The work. So this is a start because you guys are the leaders in your, in your buildings, but. You know, really hearing from the rest of the staff, you know, your health clerks, your paras, your. You know, everybody, your secretaries, what does this look like for them? And what does it look like in the end for? The parents and the students. So I just want to put that out there that I think their voice is missing tonight.
And so I would just like to echo a little bit of what Director Zubiya said. I know that these decisions are very difficult, and I feel like there is no right or wrong answer. Everyone is going to have their opinion based on their own circumstances. Whether you work from home, whether you can't work from home, whether you have daycare, whether you don't. And so for me, I think that some of the ideas around flexibility and differentiation for buildings. Could offer a solution. My concerns are. How are we going to support our students who require services, harm multi-lingual learners, our students with IEPs and 504s? And like some of the school leaders already said, we know that in-person learning is how, is how students benefit the most. Again. The decisions that are made about going remote versus in-person are not going to sit well with everyone. And so I think that. One of the things that we need to keep in mind is that we do need to keep students first in this decision. A lot of what I heard tonight was. Adult-centered, and I'm hoping that we could move towards a more student-centered approach when we're making these types of decisions and include. All stakeholders, voices, right, our families. Like Director Zubiya had mentioned, our, our other staff, our support staff, and our parents. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that we can find a solution that will really benefit our students. And so I am glad that I was able to hear from many of you. And again, I think that tonight, some of the voices that we need to truly take into consideration were, were not present. So hopefully, we can get to a point where we hear those voices as well. I also appreciate Mr. Clark for his comment about what happened today. And so I think that we also need to take into consideration why we went remote today, and why there was such a quick turnaround in time, and why, and what trickled all of these other actions down, right? How many of our, of our thresholds are being reached because of COVID, and how many are not, right? So I, I think we, we just need to take a balcony view on the decisions that we're making as well.
I, I also echo a lot of what Director Zubiya and Estrada said. I, I think we absolutely need to hear from our parents. We have, we have been receiving some emails, and I really appreciate that because we do need to hear from our community, especially our family members. What I heard a lot of tonight was our, our buildings know our buildings, our, our staff in our buildings know what goes on in the building in and out. So for to me, to me, I would like to see something that's very differentiated where we have almost a, a team at each building, but also at, at the levels. I, I do see a need for some consistency, especially among our elementary schools, only because a lot of that is very similar. It's very much grade-driven, but we also have, as, as all of our building leaders alluded to, we have different needs in each school. We have some schools that have bilingual classes and some that don't. We have some have a higher percentage of, of students with other needs that we absolutely must address, whether we're remote or in-person. This is an odd one for me because I don't know of many boards that have had to step in. But I, I too see the, the ambiguity and the frustration, and I know it's like, who, who's on first? Who's on second? I kind of feel like we're kind of stepping in as the coach to hopefully bring this all together. I do think a lot should be set in stone with some gray area, kind of alluding to what Mr. Pearson was speaking about. There are some things that we absolutely cannot be flexible on. If, if there's a high COVID rate, there are quarantine and isolation protocols that have to be followed. There are contact tracing protocols that I don't even know that we're following or implementing. There are other steps that we can take, such as a voluntary attestation or something, just to say who is vaccinated and who is not. We, we just need to have direction on where our supports need to be. And to me, it feels like the decision needs to be made at the building level because they can not only make that decision, but they can communicate that out to their families. But it also needs to be worked in collaboration with the administrators at the district level, because the district can say, hey, you, you're a short teacher in, I don't know, we'll say Spanish at the high school level. I have a Spanish teacher. Let me send him your way. So there needs to be some coordination, but at the same time, to me, doing a blanket wide threshold for a district is just not working. And I think that's what was approved. I, I don't know, because again, the board has not been brought in until now. My other wondering is, or concern is our teachers. I do, I don't know how we can get info on that, but to hear things where teachers are spending upwards of eighty-five percent of their time doing things outside of their teaching job is very concerning for me. It, it's hard as a professional to take on other people's jobs as they leave or they're out. I can't imagine that doing, doing that in day in and day out when you're trying to teach our students. So I have some thoughts. I have some questions, but I just wanted to throw out my thinking a little bit there. Thank you.
So, hello next, guys. I have a couple perspectives because I am on the board. I did sit through some meetings with this, with everyone that was present, you know, yesterday, that we did have an emergency meeting about it. You know, I will reiterate what Mr. Clark said a little bit from DuPont, that we were and had a plan to go in-person for all of our schools. And as of four o'clock yesterday, his school was able to be running at that before something was called. You know, knowing that we had this meeting set up to discuss these issues that we wanted to put forth and talk about with all of our leaders. That decision was made, you know, because we couldn't cover our schools. You know, my perspective on that is, you know, we, we did communicate that we were having this meeting, you know, we were going to talk about it. You know, we had to discuss it with our leaders as well and have this meeting publicly so our stakeholders can hear what we had to say. And listen to what our leaders had to say and what our teachers, you know, our, our teacher leaders had to say. And coming from our perspective of a parent of a seventh grade middle school student at Adam City Middle School, getting my stuff at nine o'clock at night is a little frustrating when, you know, listening to online learning with my kids, even as great as it is, and how well we did it last week, listening to the kids and listening to the teachers talk to the kids and listen to those kids say, I want to be in person. I'm not learning. Listening to my daughter have kids at, you know, going shopping with their parents, walking around logged into their class, and playing games and having good attendance because they're in a hotel room in Texas, doing class because it is remote. I mean, yeah, our, our, our remote learning, you can do it anywhere. But are our kids really learning when they're walking around Walmart or King Supers or the mall with, you know, not actually during school time? I know that. I've seen, I've sat in her classes or behind her in her classes and saw these kids doing it, you know, talking on the phone, texting their friends. You know, are we learning? Sure, we have the attendance that looks good, but, but are these kids learning? We know in-person, they're learning. We know we're giving them instruction. And I think, you know, we have to know the thresholds. Our teachers, our principals know the thresholds of the schools of what they have to do. You know, and, and that's from a student perspective of my daughter. She'd rather be in school. You know, she's not learning. You know, our numbers are showing that. The state numbers are showing that our kids are not learning remotely. You know, and how do we get it so that we can be in-person? You know, do we put down some numbers and say, this is what it is, school by school? You know, the principals make that decision, and we have to know that decision by a certain time. Absolutely. So we communicate it to the parents. But for me, it's very frustrating. We, we did have a plan. Something was laid out and said last Thursday, and that changed. You know, that changed last night. That changed at five, six o'clock last night when we were sitting there. You know, so that was a decision that had to be made for our administrators and, and them, and putting them in a tough situation that they had to make that call. And I think it does make it frustrating for our community because you only see one side of it. And unfortunately, it's a hard side that we have to live with because we're making that decision. And we have to understand why that decision was made. But for me, I think, you know, if we put some plans down and we leave it to our, our, our building leaders who know their buildings, know their thresholds, and know what they're doing, you know, for safety, you know, what, what needs to happen, I think that's where we need to, you know, focus on so that our kids are in-person learning, and they're getting that instruction that they actually, you know, that we need to have. Because I, you know, listening to, you know, kind of what, you know, Don said at All Supp, that we have more on our plate for our teachers because they are worried about school. They're worried about, you know, safety, security. But again, they're worried about their job. If this doesn't, if we don't do what the state tells us to do, they may not have jobs. So again, you know, we're on a time clock, and we all have to understand that as, as not just an organization, but our, our whole district is on a time clock. And, and if we don't do something different, you know, I understand why they're worrying about their jobs. So we do have to look at our teachers as well and our administration. But that's, that's where I'm at right now.
Go ahead, Vice President Lovato.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the, the call out of the teachers last night. I'm, I'm a bit torn here because I can kind of see both perspectives. To me, it, it seemed like there's kind of two sides. I, I, I think our union was honoring Dr. King's legacy in a way because the changes that they are demanding are things that should have been in place. And I think it takes groups like that to voice their, to push for what's right. And when they hit that point where it's just not happening, sometimes steps like that have to be taken. On the other side of that, I will say that it was very concerning because as, as Director Amador said, we took the time out of our schedules to attend a meeting where I thought we had a plan, and then we spent the rest of the evening going back and forth trying to figure out what we're going to do. So I just, I understand the, the premise of it, but I think I'm, I'm almost to the point where anything that is not in the direct interest of our students, I'm kind of done with at this point. But I just wanted to add that. I, I'm kind of sitting on the fence on that one.
Thank you, Vice President Lovato. Um, I agree. There's, we're not going to make everybody happy. There is just not, not going to happen. I can see Mr. or Director Amador's point where if they're, you know, they're attending online, but they're not really engaged. They're instead shopping and, and doing things like that. That's not, that's not a good education for anyone. But yet, if you are in school and you have an overworked teacher filling in for somebody else during their period, that's their planning period, and they absolutely don't know anything about what's being taught, which is the case because in, you know, in, in secondary school, they have their focus. And that's, you know, sometimes they don't know what, what science is if they're an English teacher. So is that good learning too? So there's just a whole lot of things to think about. But what it all comes down to is what's best for the safety of our kids, our staff, and our community. What, what, what needs do they have? So it's just a lot to think about. I know that, that, you know, I've, I've listened to everybody, and I wish that, that we could get some, some folks to talk about what their teachers are thinking, what their parents are thinking. We've heard some of that, yes. But, you know, you all are in the buildings. We aren't. So, you know, and, and I wished we could have had them on this call today, but it was just, it just because it was such a, a quick turnaround to, to get this meeting scheduled, we just couldn't. So we would love to hear from you if you have, you know, information from your, from your parents, from your staff. Like I said, we've heard from, from several of you, but we've got quite a few other schools on the, on the line. So we, we still have some time to talk about this and, and, you know, we want to hear from you. So go ahead, Director Zubiya.
Want to make sure my microphone works. Okay. So, um, yeah, I, you know, I agree and totally agree that this is not easy. And thank you for the way you put that, President Lewis, that, you know, which, which of the two evils do we pick, right? It's just not an easy one. But I have to say that, going back to Mr. Maltberg's point of, you know, this is, our teachers have not just, you know, they have stepped up, and it has been about the kids up until now. I mean, I have to admit that, you know, up until now, I have heard nothing but, you know, we have to do what's best for the children, what's best for our students, what's best for the kids. And we still have that other perspective that without staff, you can't really keep doing what you're doing that's going to benefit the kids. And so I think the other piece that we're missing here too is, why is it that they're so overwhelmed with everything? What is going on? What's the underlying issue there that, or is there something that we could do to help alleviate some of that so that they can focus more on what they're doing when they are able to be there? And so that's where I would like to get more of the information from them, and maybe even have some, you know, specific questions that we need to ask of people and have them come with some of those answers. I'm, I, most people who know me, I'm like, you know, I, I, I have three things I don't like, and one of those is whining, right? Or, or complaining without suggestions. And not that anybody here is doing that, because you all did a great job of bringing suggestions. But that's what I would recommend is that when parents or students reach out, please give us those suggestions. I mean, the, the premises for, how should I say, when you do community organizing, or at least in my mind, has always been that whenever there's an issue in the community, the community itself has the answer. We just need to find it and figure it out so that, once again, we meet the needs of both. Because in this case, it's like day and night. You can't have one without the other. You can't have students without staff, and you can't have staff without students. So how do we balance that? And how do we help guide? And, and I love this idea of having like set guidelines at the district level, but every building have know what those thresholds are for them and have them really make that call. The problem is, like any employer you talk to, is like, how do you know that you're going to be sick the next day and request, you know, ahead of time, I think I'm going to be sick on Thursday, so I'm requesting Thursday off? You can't really do it that way. So when you have these thresholds and you have these guidelines, that's what people need is a guideline. When is it appropriate to say, you know, we don't have enough staff, we don't have enough substitutes, we, you know, we just don't have enough to, to make it a safe learning environment for, for our students? How do we do that? Because I hear that, and as a parent, I would be, like even last night, I would have been livid too, but I had to remember, you know, this is an illness that is invisible, and it impacts everybody. Nobody is immune to it. What do we do when it does impact the majority of our staff? And how are we doing it? And maybe how are other people doing it? And I know other districts have more capacity. They have more staff. They have more of other things. We are a little district, but at the same time, I don't want to be stretching our staff so thin that, like President Lewis said, nobody's really benefiting from that either. So any suggestions? And I put that out there for our parents and our students. Both Directors Estrada and I speak Spanish and English. So if you want to email us or contact us and give us that information, I am willing to listen because I think that once again, the answer is in our community. So thank you all. And thank you again to everybody who's been dealing with this. And like I said, it's, it's just not an easy, it hasn't been easy for anybody. But I applaud everyone for stepping up and doing and going above and beyond. So thank you.
I have kind of a wondering, um, listening to Directors Zubiya speak about this now. We're almost two years into this. I, I guess I thought we had protocols, we had guidelines, we had a lot of this set up. So I'm having some difficulty trying to determine where the disconnect happened. Like, I, I guess, I don't know if there are external factors happening, if there are things that were in place and kind of went to the wayside when the empty team, MGT team, most of them departed at the start of the year, like where, where they're not stuff documented and put into place. It, it almost feels like we're starting at ground zero again, and, and it just seems ridiculous to me. My, my other wondering is about staff calling in. Like, are we, I, I think Director Estrada noted this. Are we differentiating between when they are testing positive and calling in and have to follow those protocols versus I'm calling in sick or, you know, my- Or um, you know, my um, I broke my toe, I gotta go to the doctor. I, I don't know, you know what I mean? Is, is it COVID related or is it another reason? Um, and the same for our students. Is attendance happening? Or are, are we doing any sort of contact tracing? Like, has it happened? And then um even in like extracurricular things, are, are parents just showing up? Like, yeah, you get two guest passes to go in, but are you having to say, hi, I'm Renee, here's my phone number in case, you know, the people that are in close proximity to me for the next five hours, uh, two or more test a positive, whatever the protocols are. I, I just feel like I want to make sure we're building on what has already been done versus starting from scratch all over.
Jason, go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if we were taking comments from non-board members, so I just wanted to chime in there. Okay, uh, so a couple of things. Um, I think, um, you know, okay, so for, for, to Renee's point, um, what happened the week we got back from January to the protocols that were in place is they were, they were completely overrun. So um, children who were unvaccinated were exposed in our classrooms and then were not contacted that they had been exposed. And teachers were very, very upset about that. Um, so that's, that's what happened, I think, with contact tracing. I think the thought is that moving forward, maybe we could do better, although the transmission in the community now is so high. I struggle with that. I, last I heard, we had three contracted employees that were doing all of the contact tracing. And when you think about like at a, a while ago, Martin talked about this. Like when you think about, you know, one positive case that we learn about in a secondary setting, you know, depending on how far into the day you're talking about contacting hundreds of people um to, to let them, because by definition, they would have been within a certain distance for a certain amount of time. So it, it very quickly gets overwhelmed. Um, so, so I think that's what happened there. Uh, the piece that we, that we, the teachers have been asking for since the beginning of COVID, so now for two years, is the piece that's being talked about tonight, which is, you know, some sort of baseline about staffing. And we'll, we'll get sort of tacit agreement here and there, but we won't get a, a public one. And I think that's what the teachers are asking for. And it, and it's, it is student focused because what the teachers are so upset about is they see day in and day out and day in and day out is that when we're not sober and honest about our capacity and then we don't have the leadership to set those guidelines and make those tough decisions, you know? What ends up happening is we put our children in unsafe, on, you know, in, in less than ideal situations. And I'd rather not go into the gory details here. I think we all know enough to know that what has been happening since we've returned from COVID, like, like we, we all have plenty of anecdotes um that are unacceptable by anybody's nature. And so I think what happened after yesterday's emergency meeting was that you, you heard from teachers that having 25% of a staff absent from the building and uncovered is, it's too high. And it, and it, and it leaves our, our kids, particularly our most vulnerable kids, even more vulnerable. And we need to do better, I think, is what you heard from, from teachers yesterday. Um, I, I understand the frustration from the, from the families. I understand it from frustration spoken here tonight. You know, but these are, this isn't a decision made up against an ideal situation. This is a decision made after two years, uh, three administrations, you know, um, demanding like, what are the rules of the road here? And then, and then it gets punted down the road. And then somebody shows up and maybe there's 50 kids in a gymnasium with a movie in front of them and one person going around trying to make sure that everybody's just safe. You know? Maybe we end up with a teacher using 100% of their planned time to cover multiple classes in a single day, which is a violation of, of the agreed contract that they have with their employer. Maybe the teacher, you know, even, even at best, all of your, your teachers are, are giving up their planned time. Most of us multiple times a week, some of us daily. And, and you see it in the turnover and you see it in the burnout. And I, I just think, you know, that what happened yesterday was, was teachers saying that, that enough is enough and, and we need to do better. And, and what's exciting is, and what's positive is that we're, we're talking about it here. Like we have, you guys have some, there, there's some real numbers being discussed and some real guidelines being discussed that people can kind of plan ahead on and would be positive. What, what I just want to encourage everybody to do is to, to, to s- like, let's, let's set a deadline for making this decision and let's, let's get it, let's get it moving so that we can start, start that, that, that process. Um, yeah, I talked a lot. Thank you very much for your time. All right, I appreciate everybody.
Go ahead, Director Estrada. And then um Ms. Rogers, you'll be next.
I just had a quick question, maybe um Dr. Luria can answer this. Are um teachers compensated when they um use their planning time to cover a class?
Yes, uh, for the agreement, there is compensation for teachers giving up their planning time.
That was all, thanks.
Lynn, do you mind turning on your camera and um unmuting? And then Ms. Principal Garcia, you will go after her. And then Principal Menard.
Okay, thank you, everyone. After hearing everybody talking, like I said, we're behind the scenes, but I would just like you to take the classified into consideration in a lot of your decisions on the thresholds too. Because not only are we shorthanded like in bus drivers already, but then we're doubling up, tripling up on routes. And then, like Mr. Pearson said, and then uh Mr. Sealeek, Mr. Pearson said, you know, going grade level by grade level makes it tough for our bus drivers because they don't know all their children by doubling up. And so we don't know who to send home from this grade or this grade, but then, and if there's even anybody back at home for them. And then for Mr. Sealeek, you know, it just makes it really tough for us to figure out, you know, are we getting the right kids to school? Are we not getting the right kids to school? And then our paras, our paras are just being torn so many different directions just to try to help our teachers out all the time. And God bless our teachers because they're, they're fantastic, you know? And it's just stressing everybody out and we can see it even in our students. I mean, uh, we've seen more acting out from our students this year on the bus than we've seen in the past two, three years. And I think it's just from lack of consistencies. And I've heard it's, you know, affecting the children in the classes too. And that's stressing our teachers as well because the kids are acting out there as well. But we also have to take into consideration, you know, the safety of our kids, which is, you know, which is best for, we don't know because their environments at home may not be the best, but their, you know, their safety at the school. But then our kids on the buses aren't wearing their mask. It becomes an everyday struggle. So then our drivers are worried, are we being exposed? We're not being notified? Excuse me, I was off sick through last week, so I apologize. And um, it just makes it a real tough decision for all of our people. Our custodians were shorthanded and they gotta sanitize and clean our schools for our kids and our staff. And it just, we would like you to, you know, let us know what happens. Take us into consideration with our shortage of how many bus drivers do we have to be down? That we can still bus everybody because we can't just grab somebody to come drive our buses for us, you know, to pick up our children. And uh, what happens if our health clerk is out at, at school or something? Who's gonna do our COVID testing and give our students their medicines? It's, it asks us a lot of questions on our part too. Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for the time. I think it's unprecedented. And this is my 29th year in education and I have never been in a board meeting streamed where you're allowing input. Being transparent and vulnerable like that is commendable. So thank you for doing that. Um, the 25%, as Jason said, is too high. When you put it in perspective, for my school, 86 teachers, that's 21 teachers uncovered. And if I had 21, I would technically be okay to have school that day. That one's tough. Um, the other one is no one has enough contact tracers in any district. I haven't heard a district yet that staffed it appropriately, so it's not like it's our fault. But I would agree, the more people and/or if there are resources to be allocated to get more contact tracers, that would definitely help us. Um, I love what I'm hearing about students first. And I'll say students first, staff second, but that's a photo finish, right? So I would always support being in schools in person and kids in front of teachers. Um, but I'm contradicting it a little bit in the fact that this January kind of a uh, uh Omicron kind of bubble thing, we may be making a different decision, but doing it for the right reason. So know that you can make those choices and I don't think anybody should be very critical of you in that regard because you're playing the long game, even though it may look like we're remote now. It's actually to save us in the end. Because our burnout is due to that lack of coverage for sure. Let's also do the lack of field positions. Because if those, I have four or five unfilled positions now that I've had for quite a while and it, and then we're, so we're constantly covering those and then we're asking them to cover, then we're paying them 1875 uh, a period to cover, which is, I don't know, seven or eight bucks after it goes in the check. So I would love for us, in a perfect world, to be able to subsidize that coverage rate even a little bit to make it just respectful to the staff that are giving up that time. Um, but again, I don't think there are any easy answers, but I think the hard decision needs to happen as soon as possible. And um, I love where your focus is and what your desire is in trying to get more people involved and get their perspectives. But I would just offer a, to, offer a, a guess on what parents would say is have school in person. And the kids would be like, oh, maybe not. But I do appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
I'm thinking for the other opportunity, another opportunity to speak and just to piggyback off of what Chris was saying and to Board Member Estrada's question. Yes, our teachers can be compensated for the time that they cover or the amount of kids that they cover, but it's another additional piece of paperwork that they have to put into their day to get that all done. I have it pulled up here on my computer so I can try and take care of it for our teachers. But that's another barrier to teachers wanting to or being open to taking, you know, more classes when um there's a need. Um, I also want to just address the elephant in the room. I felt like we were supposed to have a decision made for tomorrow at the beginning of this meeting and we are almost close to seven o'clock again with no decision for our parents for tomorrow. So um, just again, keeping our students and our staff at the forefront of our mind. Um, also was extremely grateful that we were in person today and we hope that we can continue that way. Um, and um, I just hope that we can get over this um problem that we're having so we're not perpetuating the situation more and more and more. Thank you.
I um 100% agree with what Ms. Menard said. I think we, we need to get going on some decisions here. Um, I don't know if this needs to be a motion or if, if um, school leaders can do this now. Um, President Lewis and, and Mr. Farrell, do you um, is it appropriate for me to um, make a proposed motion? And then kind of can we add the details into especially like what the next of the week is gonna look like? I, I don't know how best to proceed.
Uh, barely, Mr. Farrell.
I'd talk a little louder. Um, you're in study session right now, so um, you know, with your, with your approval as Chair, you can certainly have opened up that discussion that Vice President Lovato suggested and start working on some decision-making language um that you can see, you know, get some input from the board and work on it as a consensus action. And you know, to the extent, when you get ready to make the decision, you can um take it up and if it's um something that needs to be presented with a motion, I can weigh in now once I get a little more direction about what direction you're going in. Um, but yeah, you can certainly move forward with that.
Vice President Lovato.
Okay, um, I would like to make a, a motion, kind of a draft motion. I'm, I'm absolutely up for um feedback. But I would like to move that we direct the district administrators to identify a COVID response team to include the superintendent and MGT to coordinate school-level in-person remote learning at and within each school. I also move, oh, it's kind of one big motion. Um, I, I also moved to direct each building identify a COVID response team to include teachers, staff members at all levels. Um, definitely heard the classified. Um, to develop and implement said district-wide protocols. Um, I'll, I'll leave that and, and see if I get a second and discuss.
Well, President Lewis?
Yes.
To clarify, you're just in a discussion phase right now, working out some draft language, so you don't need to proceed with a second.
Okay.
Open it up for feedback from the other board members.
Colleagues, um, questions, thoughts about Vice President Lovato's um proposed motion?
So um, just as we've been talking, I've gotten some um emails and some texts from uh families who are watching this. And um, some of the suggestions have been, um, once again, going back to that consistency. Um, because keep in mind that not all families have one child in one school. Um, many families have multiple children in multiple schools and multiple grades. And so it's been very hard on them to figure this out. And so some suggestions are like, well, just one or the other, black and white. Um, and then others are, um, well, you have to be careful as to uh, you know, allowing the district and the schools to do it themselves because how will you, how will you know that um at the end of the day, they'll have enough coverage if they've already said, have everybody come and then all of a sudden they don't have enough staff? Um, so how will that work? And so I don't, I, like I said, I don't know um what that would look like. Now, um, on a personal note, uh, once again, instead of taking off their plate, it sounds like we're gonna be adding additional things to people's plate. Um, and so this is a tough one. Um, but in the end, they need guidance. And with that, I just wanted to, before it gets too late, before we make this motion or make a decision, I think that we can absolutely take time to make an actual um long-term decision that doesn't have to be right now. I think for right now, what we're looking at is not just for tomorrow. It's how can we have some consistency till the, at least next week? So that it gives us that time to be able to come up with um something that we thought was being done, you know, a year and a half ago. And um, and it gives everybody time to actually uh really consider all points of view. Um, I love what um Director Estrada said is, you know, that balcony view. Um, it's really important to take all of these voices into consideration and, and the end, um, really have something that balances both. But for right now, um, I would prefer if we I would prefer if we really came up with a decision really quickly about what we're going to do for the. This week and next week, because I don't want to have this back and forth for anybody and. And as a parent, I myself would appreciate that too, so.
I I would just like to add that I think. Because a communication was sent out already and like Director Amador had pointed out earlier that there was a plan in place already. I think it would be beneficial for us to continue in person. Maybe this week we come, we come up with a plan like. Vice President Lovato just motioned. And then we go from there. But I would say that for consistency sake, like our parents are asking. That this week we do exactly what was mentioned last week. We work on something to get to where we need to be. And to make sure that going forward, moving forward, there is a COVID response team, schools have a voice in the decision-making and all of that good stuff. But again, to Director Zubia's point, if we're making a decision for tomorrow, I would say that for consistency sake. If that decision was made last week, parents had already planned on that. Up until, you know, they heard the news yesterday, then we will forward in that direction.
I agree, and I would like to amend my motion. I do think that it needs to happen, but now is not the time. I totally understand the urgency. So. I would like to propose another motion that. We remain in person or return to in-person learning tomorrow. Following the current protocols in place. And we are having a study session next Tuesday, I believe. So maybe if we can ask for some. Bring this up for another, for further discussion then.
Thank you, Vice President Lovato. Mr. Director Amador, you were going to say something?
So I. I would agree with the Director Estrada that we had a decision made for this week to be in person. I think. We reach out to our principals and get those thresholds and I think we employ our communication department. This week to find a way to implement some feedback from our parents and our community and our students. Before we make this decision. At least, you know, we have numbers in front of us that. That have been given to us by the principals and the staff of those saying what they can and can't cover. Which I think is a good start, but I also want to hear from our families and I want to know what they're thinking because I. Too have been getting texts and stuff from people I know in the community that have kids. And they're even talking about, you know, like we did before, where we have a hybrid learning where, you know, some kids are always going to want to be in school. And others are going to want to be remote and we have to figure out staffing if we do something like that. So I think, you know, that has to be something that we look at as well. So I do think, you know, right now, I think for this week, we do as we planned last week to go in person. We discussed this and we get that input from our parents and, you know, our community. Of what they're feeling and we do have numbers right now and just make sure that we get those set in stone from all the principals that are on the call. That we have seen and make sure, you know, if they need to change those thresholds after, you know, listening to this conversation. They could change it appropriately to where they feel that they can cover and can't cover. I'm saying, you know, I think they put it out there and I think listening to all the conversations, you know, they know their buildings, so. Let them give us that input and then I think next Tuesday when we do do that study session, maybe we can have. More of a defined discussion and definitive answer of what we want to do.
Dr. Luria, I'd love to hear from you as well.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I. I have been very quiet, listened to to everyone making comments, our principals and. And Jason and I do want to. To shout out to all the teachers, students and principals for just pivoting back and forth. That's not easy. And I believe many. All of our staff and students are rising to the top. I do believe that communication in a timely manner is important. And I also believe that we and will like to call out all of us. You know, not only those who are here, but all of us as a community that. Our main focus are students. Is our students. Our main focus is to ensure that we are providing a high. Quality education for our students. I heard, you know, different comments about how nervous, you know. All of us maybe are about where we are in the accountability clock, but we need to also be mindful that. Without having our students in schools as much as possible, we will not. Be able to achieve the traction that we need to move the schools forward and the district forward. Having said that, I also. Realized that COVID is, like everybody has said, is this invisible. Virus and we need to make sure that everyone is safe. So it's really difficult because. It's not an easy situation regardless of the decision to stay home or to come back to school is not an easy. Decision. What I would like to hear is. And to be able to live tonight with is with a with a timeline or a cut of time for. Families to be able to know whether there's going to be school the next day or not based on our numbers. And understanding that, yes, those those change. You know, you do not decide by three o'clock, by six, I'm going to be sick. Right? But, you know, in a common sense and reasonable manner to have a cutoff. Cut off time for our families to to be able to plan. Because as we said, it's not only their livelihoods, their jobs and the ability to maintain their jobs is also the safety of our students, whether they come to school safe. Or they stay home safe. So moving forward, I I realize the need to have a longer term plan and a a. This, the a COVID committee at the schools, a COVID committee that we have at the district. But deciding for this week, I would like to hear or would like to for you to consider hearing from. The principals to see whether they are prepared to open. Or not, because we, what I would not like is to find ourselves in a situation, you know, at eight o'clock at night. So I believe the decision. You know, that flexibility I heard from principals, they they would like to see that flexibility for their campuses. They know the buildings. Better than anyone else. And it will be for me important to hear from them or to allow them to. To share whether they're ready to come back tomorrow or not. We had four schools. That were in school today. We heard, I believe, from most of them that they are ready to continue tomorrow, but. Would like to hear those who are absent or remote today. What their thoughts are because I do not want to set up anybody for failure tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Luria. Director Zubia?
So let me please lower my hand. So that's what I was going to recommend is that I need. I would hate to say, yes, let's go to in-person and then not have the staff there to be able to take care of our kids. So. As we just stated and as Dr. Luria put it, it makes sense to hear back from. The folks on this call and let us know what your opinion is for the remainder of this week, not just for tomorrow, but the remainder of this week. So. We get a better understanding, especially the ones that were, well, that were on remote. So yeah, and I'd also like to hear from Jason as to is what he knows as far as. What the rest of the week is going to look like for his members. So, thank you.
I have a hand up, Madam President. Would you like to hear from Principal Martinez if you could? Sorry, if you could unmute. And turn on your camera, please.
Hello, hello, hello. Thank you for having me and thank you for for hearing what I have to say. Our teachers want to be back. They want to be back with the students. I think. The teachers at my school feel very unsafe in coming back to school. And right now I don't have any absences for tomorrow and. I could say that, yes, let's go back tomorrow. That's the right thing to do. That's what our kids need. And and I know that many teachers will call out because they don't feel safe in coming back right now. And this is for me at my school and. At my school, I won't have the coverage. We have a very small school and we won't be able to operate. So I just wanted to make that comment. And it would be helpful, at least for the rest of this week, to be. Online while we figure out all of the details in how to move forward as a district and by school. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Lewis, I also, I think that as the president, as the principals are letting us know that information. Can I ask if they could just tell us what? How many of, how many teaching staff they have in their building? I'm curious to.
We actually received that information in our inbox.
Okay, I will look at that. I haven't had a chance. I apologize. I've been crazy.
If we could have Principal Green and then after Principal Savage shares.
Good evening. President Lewis, Dr. Luria, Steve, members of the board. I've had patchy internet, so if I. If I start breaking up, that's probably why. The principal of Monaco and we are in a very, very similar circumstance to. To Lisa Martinez at Hanson. We have 12 teaching staff. They're very, very, very dedicated to our kids. And at this point, we. Are able to cover as the numbers stand now, we are able to cover coming back in person. We did not go. We did not go remote today because. Of illness completely. From listening to my teachers, my my amazing teachers and my staff. They. They don't feel like they're always heard. And when they share that they're not feeling safe. That everyone listens to them. And so this was an opportunity for for them to be heard. And I stand behind them because I know they do what's best for our kids. The numbers have been up in our community and we see our kids come in sick. So at this point. Technically, our numbers show that we could cover it for tomorrow. And we have put, I've worked with my my union. Representatives and we've put together COVID protocols for Monaco and. And right now, they're not sure if everyone feels safe in coming back. So I can't answer that they will feel sure, they will feel safe. And so I think I would probably agree with Principal Martinez, Hanson, that. You know, as we, as we make sure that we have our. Our details, you know, that we're clear. That it's not the back and forth and that they they know that they. Will come into a safe environment. District-wide that they will be heard when they don't feel safe. I think that's probably. What will be best for for Monaco as well.
Sorry.
Principal Savage, will you unmute and turn on your camera, please?
Thank you again. I agree with what Mr. Green said about. Our teachers are doing their best and we really, we have their backs and everything they're doing. Currently, we have one scheduled absence for tomorrow. It's not COVID-related. And we should be able to open, but I don't know what would happen if we make a decision to go in person. If I would have absences start to appear or not. I would defer to Mr. Malmberg since he knows the. The association members better than than a lot of us do.
Director Estrada?
Before we, I feel like there might be a misunderstanding. If we go in person, it is not saying that we are not listening or valuing our union members. I'm part of the CTA. I'm part of the union, right? What we're saying is that for consistency sake and for our parents who had planned on. Sending their kiddos to school, that that plan is going to move forward. So in no way do I want it to get misconstrued to say that if we make a decision to go. In person, it is not valuing the opinion of the union. I fully support. The teachers for for. Speaking up for their needs. So again, I just wanted to make that point.
Principal Pearson?
Thank you. So in just looking at our numbers right now. We'll be fine. I've got one person in ASAP. I do have it on good authority right now, though, that that number is going to increase and our thresholds that we had discussed earlier today. Will probably. I would imagine that we'll reach that threshold. So whatever statement is made tonight, I think there needs to also be a qualifying statement around those thresholds. Because I think it sounds great if we say we're going to push kids back to in-person learning, which I'm all for. But I also recognize the reality of our situation. I think there's a very good possibility that even if we push this, that there's. There's going to be a need potentially in my building and other buildings to. Look at remote learning as an option again.
Mr. Malberg?
First off, thank you, Board Member Estrada for for voicing that. I appreciate it. So based on our internal polling, I think it's fair to say that, and you know, I'm. Yeah, so based on internal polling, I think it's fair to say that if we leave here tonight without a plan in place. For for how we're going to proceed, that there's, that the numbers probably will go up, you know, just. Inherently. But I think if we leave here tonight with a plan in place, like, okay, we have some numbers in front of us. We're going to, we're going to go from here and then we're going to do X, Y, and Z on these, on this timeline. And people can have a sense that we're moving towards. Invoking some protocols that are reasonable, then I think the numbers are going to go up a whole lot less, you know? And, you know. I'm not, I'm not the. Wizard of Oz here. I'm not the man behind the curtain, you know, I'm trying to just give you the read on where people are at, you know? Okay.
Director Estrada?
Thank you for that. And I do just kind of want to reiterate the motion that Vice President Lovato brought forth. There is a plan to have a plan in place. So the plan isn't for us just to say, go back in person and we'll figure it out. Y'all spoke loud and clear yesterday. We do need to have a system in place. Why it hasn't been there? Why we can't be proactive about it? I don't know. Why, what happened like Vice President Lovato mentioned? We've been in COVID for two years. What happened? I don't know. The the goal is that we do have a plan moving forward. And that we're just giving our parents consistency.
Thank you. Director Zubia?
So I agree with. Director Estrada's comment. Yes, absolutely. We're not saying that we're not going to have a plan. We're just saying that for the remainder of the week, we need to make sure that that. Information gets out tonight so that people will know what to expect for the remainder of this week or next week. But taking into consideration what everybody has said. You know, I think the only thing that's missing right now is to give everyone a deadline and say, we need to have this process in place. ASAP, but what does ASAP mean? Is that by? Um, is that by next Tuesday? Is that by next Thursday? What is feasible? But we can't allow it to keep going on week by week. A number has to be, we have to actually have something in place that says, for right now, this is what that threshold number is and, um, we're going to review that, um, by such and such date. I think that's the only thing that I would really recommend that we do. Is really make up that decision for the remainder of the week.
Yes, Dr. Luria.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. To that point, there is a document that was shared and Jason has reviewed it as well that was sent to Jason and to you earlier for you to review. And it does have the thresholds. Um, there, it, it does have principal input. And it does have, um, by grade actually, or subject area, how many teachers, each school will be able to cover and, and the number of teachers that after, you know, meeting that threshold, they're not going to be able to cover. I would say that that is exactly what is being referenced, um, here. And I would like to confirm, um, with Jason, uh, because the conversations that, uh, happened, um, this afternoon about those numbers is that that plan is an acceptable plan, or at least, you know, talking about the thresholds. Um, so I would like to, to confirm that with Jason because that is, um, to my understanding, uh, what the union and, and, uh, the teachers were looking for. It includes in there also the flexibility for the schools to determine, you know, there are some key staff members. We know it's not only about the teachers, but it allows for, after that threshold, there's going to be a conversation with the principals to determine whether, um, they're going to be able to cover or not. Because again, there are other key positions. And, um, in what would be needed, um, at this point is then the cutoff for the families. So if we say, for example, by three o'clock, it's an adequate time for families to know the next day, whether the school will need to pivot back to remote. Then we say that three o'clock, that will give, and I'm just saying that our thinking that if I were a teacher, I'm three o'clock, I'm still at the school. So before I leave, I know I have to take everything with me. So I would like to confirm with Jason whether that would suffice that plan. And number two, what time would be appropriate? Again, we know after that, we might have absences, but then the school will need to open centrally. And, uh, you know, all hands in deck will support that school so that we provide that consistency to the parents. Rather than at eight o'clock, you might receive a news that absences in one school, school are up. And now we're going to close. We have to provide that assurance to the parents as well.
Thank you, Mr. Malberg.
Yes, I am looking at that document and, and it is very much in line with what the teachers want. And so I, I, I am very much in agreeance with, with using this as a, as a guideline. Um, the other thing I wanted to say was the district did a really good job. There were other points outside of this. Uh, the district did a great job, um, oh, last evening, getting that communication out. And, you know, one of the key pieces there was, you know, reiterating that, that it, I, I, I'm going to mess up the, the wording, but I'm paraphrasing here. Basically, if, if the, the level of transmission within the schools exceeds the capacity of the district to contact trace, that, that we would go remote in that building. And that's already been communicated out to the, to the community. And so, so that, I think, is a step in the right direction and a clear policy that people can get behind. So, yes, I agree, agree with this document. I agree with the, the statements that were sent out, uh, by Mr. Lundin, uh, last evening. You know, of course, now that we've set these benchmarks, like, I think we all as a community need to make sure that we're following them, right? Like, if, if, if we don't have the capacity to do contact tracing because transmission has gotten to a point, right? And we, we aren't able to staff that, then we're going to need to go remote in whatever that situation is, right? And, and if, if we accept these numbers, same, same thing.
Thank you. Um, Vice President Lovato.
Um, thank you, President Lewis. I, I guess I just have a, a question for clarification. What document and what numbers are we speaking of? I, I am just a bit confused here.
So, uh, it looks like it was sent out earlier today, Ms. Lovato. It's, uh, it's called Threshold Staff, Staffing Needs for the Schools. And it has a breakdown of the preschools, the elementary, the middle schools, the high schools. Roughly looking at each school individually, like all sub says, you know, uh, pre-K, if they have, you know, they have three, uh, three teachers. Uh, they need, if they have one call out, they can still cover, you know, kind of giving us a threshold. It, it breaks down, you know, um, grade level by grade level. It breaks down, uh, you know, the middle schools, how many they need. They're pretty, pretty similar. It breaks down the high schools. Um, that looks like, you know,
The, the Google sheet one that,
Yeah, it looks like, you know, like Adam City High School. Yeah, yeah, those in Adam City High School, eight, you know, eighty-five teachers, twelve to thirteen range is roughly about fifteen percent total. It gives us all the information. Um, you know, that was something, uh, I think that, that they started to provide us. Um, and they had that information.
Principals, correct?
Right, it's from the principals, yeah. It's from the principals, um, in their eye of what they feel they can cover with our schools, um, with the callouts of it. Um, which is, it's, uh, you know, it's a great start. I just, you know, listening to some of them and what they had to say, uh, you know, I wonder if they would change any of that, um, going forward. Cause I know some of our elementary schools, you know, they're, they have two, two staff members for grade level. And I mean, you get no callouts. You have to have almost a perfect staff in for them to keep going. So, um, you know, I feel it, you know, if we do put these into place, looking at the numbers that they've provided us and given us, you know, what is our threshold? What, uh, what time do we expect our parents to have communication? Is the biggest key that I guess, if we do agree to these numbers, at what time are we going to give our community the information to say, you're going to be remote today, you're going to be here? You know, um, cause like you said, we don't know who's going to be sick, you know, they don't plan a sick day. Um, you know, if they wake up in the middle of the night in hot sweats and they can't come in the next day, you know, are we saying that, you know, if, if our class is going to be in person or remote, it has to be by seven o'clock at night. So the parents have time. Is it six o'clock? What's that threshold? And I think that's the biggest thing for me is what's the threshold that we want to and, you know, giving our, giving our leaders at the school, they have those numbers, you make that decision and then you feed it through communications and we get it out to our parents in a timely manner. Not at nine o'clock, not at ten o'clock on the news. You know, the consistency that we need to have there so they know. I'm going to get a, a thing at seven o'clock tonight on Flyer app that tells me my kid's going to school tomorrow or my kid's remote. Um, you know, and that's just, you know, I think that's our, I think that's the second part of it is if we agree to these numbers that we've, you know, I've, I've looked at them all day, um, since we've got this document. And then, you know, figuring that threshold, is it, you know, what time do we say? If we're fully staffed at six o'clock tonight, we're good to have school. You know, looking at all this stuff right now, you know, we told all the parents today in the email and the, the communication out through the news, at five o'clock, we'll tell you if you're going to be in person or remote. If we said, hey, at five o'clock, all of our, all of our staff is in, talking to, uh, Ms. Martinez and listening to what they've all said, they don't have staff callouts, so they can cover for in person. And we made that decision. And then all of these staff members called out at nine o'clock tonight or ten o'clock, we may be saying, well, we don't have coverage now. So, you know, it's, uh, you know, we just have to have that timeframe in there and we have to stick to it.
Thank you, Director Almador. Uh, Director Zubia.
I do have a question, um, that, um, I totally forgot to ask and thank you, um, Ms. Connie for sending that. Uh, so if we don't have enough teachers to be in person, how do we know we have enough teachers to be remote? If, um, they're sick, because when, and all of us have been in that situation where we're sick, we're not working even remotely. So how does that factor in? And then there's one other, um, thing that I think we haven't factored in, that we factored in in the beginning of COVID, which was, um, we had, because we kept pushing for this back then, is that we needed that, that threshold, the community threshold, the numbers, um, in the community, the COVID numbers, um, the actual, you know, uh, rates for our community that impacted the whole district. And so that's kind of how we had been operating in the beginning and then all of a sudden that went away. And so it just has been very confusing since then. But I remember having those conversations because I get those numbers, um, through my job. So I'm able to see what that, um, percentage is. And when you have, you know, the huge numbers that we've had, the, the increase of numbers that we have, no wonder people aren't feeling safe. Parents aren't feeling safe to send their kids. Staff isn't feeling safe. I mean, I can see why that is. And I think that, um, that is a set number that if we have a certain threshold of that number, that you can say by three o'clock, this is what's going to happen. Um, and we could do it instead of, you know, I mean, it just something else to consider, um, is the fact that there, there is data out there, um, that proves how drastic this variant has been and how it has spread through our community. So, yeah.
Thank you, Director Zubia. Um, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that looking at our numbers at Kearney Middle School, um, we would be over our threshold, uh, based on absences right now. And it is for a variety of reasons. Um, some is COVID, some is for teacher's annual leave. Uh, one teacher has jury duty. It is a variety of reasons. Um, I have one teacher that texted me as well and said that their mother just tested positive. They are waiting results for their own test. Uh, they are symptomatic. And so they don't want to expose others as well at this time without knowing their results. And so, but that teacher felt like they would be willing to still teach remotely, even though they don't quite have their COVID results yet. So, um, that is my current reality at Kearney Middle School.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to go back to, um, Vice President Lovato. Um, we are running out of, we've run out of time, actually. And you all have been at work all day long, just, um, killing it for our students and, and everything. So we don't want to keep you any longer. So, um, I would like to, um, go back to Vice President Lovato and, and have her restate her motion or, um, whatever it is that, uh, we need to consider.
Okay, I, and I, I guess I don't know how to proceed here because if we, if I make a motion to move to in-person, are, are we theoretically saying we're going to accept the threshold that's been set or we're going off the thresholds that are in this document that was sent?
Good question. Um, I think we should go with the thresholds that are in that document that we, that principals gave us.
Can I, can I make the motion for you, Ms. Lovato? So I motioned to move that we approve the document that was provided to us by the principals and the numbers to be either in-person or remote based on the principal of the school and the absentee that they have currently by seven o'clock PM on any given night, um, whether they will be remote or in-person.
So I appreciate that, Mr. Almador, but that's still, um, is not, um, what do I want to say? I'm sorry. I, I have serious brain fog, um, people. So, um, that's not, that's like on a day-to-day basis and we've been talking about consistency. So, um, how might we look at that?
I think the dated, the day-to-day consistency is going to be that we are going to tell the community by seven o'clock each day, whether we're going to be remote or in-person, because that's what they want. If we know a threshold that seven o'clock is not going to be met where the school has to go remote, then that's communicated to that, that, that school and that community. So they know that they will be remote, because that's what I think they're wanting. They need to know at a certain time that they're going to need to get coverage for their childcare if they're going to be remote or if their kid's going into person. Listening to what the principals are talking about, it does give them that, that ability to see what they have for callouts. And that we are giving the teachers an understanding that we take into consideration what they're, what they are talking about. And if, you know, you do have a multitude of teachers out, not just for COVID-related, and we can't open that school, we're letting that community know for the consistency to say at seven o'clock, we are going to let you know if your child is going to be in-person or remote for the next day. Um, because that's what they're asking for. You know, we can say we want you in person, but if our thresholds are met, we can't consistently open that school. Um, and if our, you know, that, that's what I think the, the teachers and, you know, the principals are asking, to give them that power to say, we know today at seven o'clock, we're not going to have enough teachers to staff tomorrow and we need to be remote. Because like, like, uh, the principal from Kearney just said, uh, Monsieur Kloski, he knows that he has to be remote tomorrow. He knows that he has a teacher that's waiting on results, but could still work remotely. So we are giving them that, that opportunity to be able to, to staff and give our community that time to understand this is the reason for it and that could be communicated by each school.
So I still, I still think that leaves it to on a day-by-day basis, um, not a consistent, um, I mean,
I think right now we're in a day-to-day basis, um, with, with the numbers and the cases. I, I mean, if we say we're going to go in person and we have, you know, half the staff call out, we're going remote, there's still no consistency. So I think we have to do a day-by-day basis, what they're asking for, to have it in place so that we know and we can communicate to our, our families and our community in a timely manner that they will be remote or they will be in-person.
Okay. So, um, I, I, yeah, I, I just think we need to say like for a week or for, for, you know, I, I, I don't know. I just, thoughts, board members?
I agree. I see what Director Almador is saying. But I also see, as we heard from our principals, it's like, yes, if we say we're going to go in person tomorrow, um, the schools that have those concerns, whether it be students, parents or teachers, the teachers are either going to call out and the parents are going to keep their students home because they're not feeling safe. So I'm, I'm concerned about making a district-wide motion. But I also am concerned about making a day-by-day. I, I, I think the numbers are rising, but the COVID protocols say like, we should be, at the end of this week, we should be at the end of this. If people are taking the precautions that they need to, granted, it happens. So I, I think I would like to move to, um, return to in-person learning. I, I just, I need to think about this. I'm sorry, you guys. I'm jumping in here at the wrong time.
Okay.
I, I was under the impression that we were going to kind of make a decision for how we're moving forward based off of yesterday's events. Um, in my head, I was thinking more along the lines of, we make a motion to continue this week one way or the other until, um, we have a clear plan in place where we have all stakeholders' voice, because at this point, we don't. Am I right, wrong?
So do you mean, re, can you restate the, the first part of that, that we're making a decision for the rest of this week?
Yeah, well, I was just under the impression that based off of yesterday's events and the need for systems and structures to be in place for COVID, that we were making a decision for this week, right? To say, are we going back in person or not this week because of last week's decision that was made on Thursday? Then that gives us time to listen to more stakeholders, to have Dr. Luria implement some kind of a plan or talk to us about how we want to move forward. And then move from there.
So then maybe the motion needs to be around making a motion to go in-person this week while we create a plan moving forward so that by Monday or whatever date y'all think is feasible, we have a solid plan moving forward that will take all stakeholders' feedback and consideration. I agree with Director Strata. That, that was by impression we had to come up with for the remainder of the week because we need to have that input and have something more in place moving forward so that everybody knows, the community, the parents, the kids, everybody knows what that process is going to look like moving forward. And not to throw a little wrench in there, but there's also, like one of the parents reminded me, there's supposed to be an ice storm tomorrow. So then there's the weather issue as well that you need to consider. So I personally, I am feeling more comfortable doing remote for the rest of the week and then, except for those schools that already had the in-person, if they still are okay. But, and leaving it like that until we come up with something because we can't. I mean, as parents and students, this, it's giving us whiplash going back and forth. So that would be my recommendation, but that's just me. President Lewis, do you think you can capture that in a motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to think about it. In the meantime, let's hear from Principal Pearson.
I apologize. I didn't know if it was even appropriate for me to put my hand up. But it seems to me that we're in this situation where potentially we'd make a decision to where we are going to go back in-person in order to build consistency. My concern is, we can say we're going back in-person, but if I don't have the staff to do that, we're still going to be looking at remote. So I think that's a conversation. What I'm hearing from some of the teachers and also a couple of the principals is maybe the decision here needs to be to remain remote for the week so that we can hash out these very details that we're trying to do in this meeting.
Thank you. Now you see how hard our job is. Principal Camas.
Evening again, board. Thanks so much again for your time. Just a couple of things. I told our group a week ago that we learned a lot last year. As a leader and as an educator, we learned a lot from getting through 2021. I remember, I memorized the date. It was January 26th when we started in-person. That was, again, when we knew a lot less about vaccines and the pandemic. We were all learning a lot. That being said, I will say we went from April 26th till April 1st without any kind of quarantining happening at my school. And that was because we learned how to do PPE, social distancing. So I guess what I'm saying is, I wonder if the board would consider, as Director James Amador was saying earlier about maybe having a little bit more site-based. And we have that, you have that document now about the number of staff that each principal has put down. I think what I'm saying is that we've learned how to navigate through this pandemic. We have evidence and data to help us understand what to do, how to do that. Because I, I think at this point, it's not a matter of can we? I think it's a matter of should we, being so late, you know, 7:20 in the evening? I don't think it's a matter of can we be in-person. I think I will say we can. I think my question is, should we? Because it's 7:20 and my office manager is saying that parents have been asking, you know, what are we doing? They still don't know and it's this late in the evening. So I just wanted to make sure that the board understands that we have some documents that could help us with each school making those decisions. We've learned a lot how to navigate in 2021 through this pandemic. I just think given us that leadership, that autonomy that we need right now at the school level to serve our communities as best we can. And also I just want to say this to board, and that is, I heard clearly from my teachers that they are being felt like they're in the middle. They want to serve our kids, but they also want to support the union. And I think a way of getting, that's a very difficult situation to be in, to, to want to support the cause of your, your union, your team, your colleagues, but also serving the underserved children of Addis 14. Let's, let's get our teachers out of that situation by having, you know, having vision here, having, having some decision-making, giving us time to really prepare our teachers and our community. So our teachers are not in that situation where they have to pick, do they serve Addis 14 children or do they, how do they support the union at the same time? Thank you.
Thank you. Principal Savage.
Thanks again. And I'm speaking solely as Principal Kemp Elementary and that is my interest. And I know you guys have to consider all the schools. I agree with everything that Mr. Camas said, that we did learn a lot last year. We know we didn't have the smoothest of springs last year. There were times we had to put classes on quarantine or teachers on quarantine, but we stayed open the whole time. I'm concerned that we're doing remote learning while I have very, at my school, very low numbers of cases. And then we do that for a couple of weeks, then we come back to in-person learning and that's when my school has some cases and we're online further. It seems to me that if, you know, if a staff is healthy and able to go, we need to be in school as much as we can. And that's just, like I said, speaking just from me and my school.
Thank you. And we'll take one more, Mr. Melberg, and then I believe we'll go back to Ms. Lovato and we really need to wrap this up for our community. So go ahead.
Sure. I just wanted to echo Martin's point about if, if we do just go back this, for consistency, that's, it's kind of the status quo, which has been inconsistent. I think if you guys do, you could choose to, to keep it the way that it was today for the duration of the week, giving you a little bit of time to put together your plan and implement it, implement it fully. You know, but I also hear the comments that, you know, if we have a full staff and, and, and students that are, you know, that, that don't have an outbreak, that we need to be in school, absolutely. You know, again, that's having the rules of the road so that we can make that happen as much as possible is, is what we're looking for. And, but I just want to say again, and then a couple of people brought it up here. I mean, the community transmission this week is still super, super, super high. And, and that's also a reality that, I mean, you, you, you need to take into consideration when you think about what to do for this week. But taking up enough of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Lovato, if you don't mind, may I bring in Mr. Farrow? And he might have some suggestions for us. Is that okay with you?
Um, yes, I, I, while we were talking and I was listening, I did come up with a motion that I would like to put forth.
Okay.
If that's okay. Okay. Um, I move that the district return to in-person learning effective tomorrow, January 19th, 2022, 22, and to direct Superintendent Luria and her staff to establish district-wide protocols to present to the board for approval next Tuesday, January 25th, to be based on COVID positivity rates within Commerce City, reported by Tri-County Health Department, and internally developed staffing thresholds reflected, reflecting when critical unavailability of staff due to COVID prevent safe and effective in-person learning. Hope that makes sense.
It does. Thank you. Um, Mr. Farrow, did you have any suggestions or does Miss, does Vice President Lovato's motion make sense for us to move on or?
Thank you. I think that motion, that motion does make sense. I understood it. I, I think that would be a proper motion if that's the direction you all want to go in. I know you're ready to make a decision. So it sounds like you're probably ready to move into that next item on your agenda, which was an action item. And so then I would suggest you have Vice President Lovato read it again and then seek a second and then see if there's any, any discussion before you take, take an action on it.
All right. Thank you so much.
Sure.
So we are moving into item 1.4, action item, decision on learning. And Vice President Lovato, can you please restate the motion for the record?
Okay, it might be a little out of order here. I move that the district return to in-person learning effective tomorrow, January 19th, 2022, and to direct Superintendent Luria and her, and staff to develop district-wide protocols to be presented to the board for approval to include COVID positivity rates within Commerce City, reported by Tri-County Health Department, and internally developed staffing thresholds reflecting when critical unavailability of staff due to COVID prevent safe and effective in-person learning by next Tuesday, January 25th, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
I second.
Thank you. And then board members, discussion regarding it?
No more discussion tonight, but definitely next Tuesday.
Yes, definitely. I think we, we've heard a lot from what all of our stakeholders have to say. I think at this point, it's, it's just yay or nay and start working on that plan so that our teachers feel safe and secure coming back and so that our students have a good place to be.
Director Zubia?
I just want to say that once again, I'm sorry. So I agree with most of that, Vice President Lovato, except for the fact that we had some schools today that were not able to stay open. And we just heard from some principals that they're not going to have people tomorrow, enough to stay open. So with that motion, that's great, but what does that do for the kids that are going to show up? And there's not, nobody at the school for them. Because we're letting the parents know that school is open when we just heard that there's some that don't have the capacity with the numbers that they have. So I guess that's my concern. I, I agree with, I, I really like the motion of, or amending that to add that maybe we just leave it as it was today for the remainder of the week until we get all of that, those other pieces done. That way, those that were open are open and those that were remote were remote until this gets figured out. Because once again, I'm just concerned that there's, we're, we're going to end up in the same place as we did today and it's going to be last minute and everybody's, you know, what do you do as a parent when you drop off your kid and there's nobody there to actually teach them? So that is my only. So is that a no?
Um, well, and I, sorry. I guess I just have a clarifying question because I, I would say that by returning to in-person learning, I mean that those, the, those processes and those thresholds that we were following are in place. So for the schools that report to Dr. Luria and her staff, hey, there's, there's no way we can open tomorrow or the rest of this week, then they report that and we respect that and, and go by that. I don't know if I need to add that to the motion or what, what do you suggest, John and Ron?
Yeah, I, I would like to hear from Mr. Farrow because I agree with Director Zubia. There are schools that, that aren't just, they're not going to be able to open this week. And I respect that and I want, you know, all of our kids to, to have what they need, one way or the other. So, Mr. Farrow?
Thank you, for President Lewis. If I could just ask for clarification, so have, have some schools already, have they announced whether they would be moving in-person or remote for the remainder of this, starting tomorrow? That hasn't been announced?
No.
Okay. So the, the decisions as to whether they, they would be able to proceed in-person haven't been made as of right now?
That's correct.
Okay. But it sounds like most of you are comfortable with the notion that they would be able to make those decisions under, under the supervision of district leadership based on the, the protocols that were sent to you and the spreadsheet that you all were talking about? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then your, the plan would be then, I think the rest of the motion makes, makes it clear that that's the way, that would be the status quo moving forward after tonight up until the board takes further action. Say it's when you receive, you know, the additional information you've asked for by next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, so would, would it help if I re, um, let me read this and tell me if it, if it's capturing. I move that the district return to in-person learning effective January 19th, following the internally established, established thresholds reflecting when critical unavailability of staff due to COVID to prevent safe and ineffective learning exist. And stop it there. Is that?
To clarify, would you, would the motion then continue, otherwise as you wrote it, that?
Regarding the information that we have for next week?
Direct Superintendent Luria and staff to establish district-wide protocols to be presented.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that accomplishes what you, you all seem, the direction you seem to want to go in. So what we should, you, you had a motion in a second. And so Vice President Lovato can move to amend her, the motion that she made. And you should restate it again so everybody can hear it and, and make that as a formal motion to amend. And I would suggest that you read the whole thing as amended.
Thank you.
Okay. Here, here I go. Thank you, Mr. Farrow. I move that the district return to in-person learning effective tomorrow, January 19th, 2020, following the internally established thresholds reflecting when critical unavailability of staff due to COVID to do, ah, sorry, due to COVID that presents, prevents safe and effective in-person learning and to direct Superintendent Luria and her staff to develop district-wide protocols to presented, to, to be presented to the board for approval next Tuesday, January 25th, 2022.
And then do we have a second on that?
I second.
Any additional discussion?
The only thing I have is, is this still going to be case-by-case, school by school? At the end of the day, that motion is still going to make it that. So we, I, I agree with the motion outside of, we have to have a timeframe so we can communicate that to our community in that motion. That, that's the biggest thing. We're giving them everything on there.
And I agree that it needs to, it needs to be before seven o'clock. It needs to be like five o'clock. So I, I, obviously tonight, we can't make that, that time frame. But in future decisions, in, yes, I agree, Mr. Amador, or Director Amador, that we should have that stated as well. Dr. Luria?
Madam President, members of the board, can that motion be read again? What I heard is January 19th of 2020, rather 2022.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Farrow?
Switched to the other way. Excuse me. Thank you, for President Lewis. I was just going to comment, I think that the point that Board Member Amador made and that you echoed and several of you have made tonight has been made clear. And I think that it should be, it should be clear that the board's expectation is by the, the deadline that you set in there, the next meeting, that the updated protocol that would be presented is going to include some very clear parameters about what time a decision would have to be made and announced to the community. And I think that if Board Member Lovato would just clarify that she intended it to be 2022 in the motion and that if, the Board Member Strata, Treasurer Strata, who made the second, agrees with that, then you can move forward. the Board Member Strata, Treasurer Strata who made the second, uh, agrees with that, then you can move forward.
Yes, I can. Oh, I, and I can confirm I meant 2022 this month, right here, right now.
Thank you. Thank you. And Director Estrada, you agree with that? Yes, okay. And Director Zubia?
I, I agree with, um, the way, um, uh, it was explained. So thank you, Renee, for doing that. Um, I'm just, uh, now wondering, because you said it was only due to COVID, but like we heard from the principals, they have staff out for other reasons, not just COVID. Um, so is this one only because of COVID? I mean, I just wanted to clarify.
I think it just matters that the threshold for the whole school, I think it's based on the threshold for the whole school.
No matter, just, not just because of COVID, because the, the language says that it's because of COVID.
Um, thank you. Mr. Pharaoh?
Yes, Board President Lewis?
Um, so Director Zubia wanted to know if it was just for COVID. I think it's because of the thresholds that we need to make sure that we have staffing. So, um, do we need to change the motion or can we keep it the same?
I don't think, again, I haven't seen the, uh, working document that you all have been looking at and was presented to you, but, um, first on the one hand, I don't, I don't think you need to change the motion. Uh, the motion did say due to COVID, um, unavailability of staff. I mean, of course, that's your primary staff availability issue. And on top, you know, with that, at any time, you're going to have, um, other reasons why someone may be out. Right? So, um, I don't, I don't, my understanding of the document that you've been given doesn't limit that decision in any way to only COVID. I mean, the absences are what they are. And so, you know, that's, it's going to be the staffing issue with the thresholds of the school set. That's really what you're approving in the motion. And I think, you know, the clarifications are good on the record as well in case staff have questions, but I, I don't think you need to amend the motion as written.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no further discussion, Monica, will you call, roll please?
Mr. Amador?
Hi.
Mrs. Estrada?
Hi.
Mrs. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Lovato?
Hi.
Ms. Zubia?
Hi.
Thank you. Um, motion carried. Um, thank you so much to everybody who is here and who is listening at home. We've had, um, many, um, emails regarding this as well. So we do appreciate that. Um, again, this has been, this is just a really hard decision to make and, um, we hope that, um, we made the right one and that next week we can do some more work on this and, um, make sure that going forward, then we will, um, have more, um, guidance for this. So again, you all have worked so hard today and thank you for being on this call. We, we sincerely, sincerely appreciate it. So um, with that, board members, we do have a need for an executive session um, for the purpose of CRS 2464024B, legal advice for state accreditation. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
So we'll, second.
Yeah, thank you. Monica, roll call please.
Mr. Amador?
Hi.
Mrs. Estrada?
Hi.
Mrs. Lewis?
Hi.
Ms. Lovato?
I'm.
Ms. Zubia?
Hi.
Um, we will have no further business after the executive session, so we will adjourn from there. So, um, again, we sincerely appreciate all the hard work that you and the staff and, and everybody has done to make sure that, that our students get what they need. And, um, we look forward to, um, having you watch our, um, meeting, our study session next week, um, so that we, um, can firm up these, these plans. So thank you so much. Um, Mr. DiGuero?
Uh, just want to make sure it's safe to, uh, some of the, uh, District Communications Department will be sending that out shortly.
Yes, sir. Yes, as soon as, as soon as we possibly can. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Good night, all. Be safe and we will see you soon.
We have a different link, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good night.